So, we have now a meeting of the Urbana City Council. I'd like to call the meeting to order, and I would last to ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Councilmembers Brown, Hazen. Let him get off mute.
Dean Hazen.
Hershey.
Here.
Jacobson.
Here.
Miller.
Here.
Roberts.
Here.
Wu.
Here.
Mayor Marlin. Dean, are you there? I may have lost him.
All right. This will be the approval of the minutes of our previous meeting from June 17th.
He's out.
So moved.
Are there any corrections to it? Well, I can ask now. Okay, moved by Jared Miller, seconded by Eric Jacobson. Any corrections, additions to the agenda? Not the agenda, but to the minutes. Seeing none, all those in favor of approving indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, they pass. All right. Additions to the agenda? Let's see, we have...
Dennis.
Yes.
Staff has asked us to remove one item from new business ordinance number 2019-07-037, an ordinance approving a major variance to 1 West University Avenue from ZBAC case number 2019-MAJ-02 to the next meeting, and I'd support taking it off.
All right, very good.
Seconded.
Okay, seconded by Sharice. Anybody who would object to that? I think staff needs some time to sort out a few of the details before we talk about it. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, that passes. We'll see that coming up again next. All right, there's lots of public input. We have quite a lot. But I was thinking, well, I wondered if we should have staff report. Do you want to do that first? Charlie, you could suggest that. Staff reports.
No, there isn't staff report, but there are two items from the committee room.
That we could do, yeah. All right, so... All right, so do you want to wait on public input yet? Because of us, the public input is going to be on something that has not related to the agenda.
I would like to see it first.
Okay. Public input? All right, well, then we'll do that. So we have quite a lot of people who would like to speak, and because of the number of individuals, we're going to have to limit a little bit the time that's allowed for all. First, I'm going to go through the names of people who, I understand, would like to make a comment concerning issues here that do not wish to actually speak before the First, we'll do Bishop King-Janes and Dr. Evelyn Underwood, who wish to address the topic that they are continually concerned about the condition of the Dr. Ellis subdivision sewer problems. They would like to make this comment to the city council, but do not wish to address the council in person. So thank you for that. All right, we have a number of people who are concerned about the special use permit requirements that are being proposed by the city and adopted, and this relates to how it affects the IMC, the International, not International, it's the Independent Media And those who do not wish to address, but wish to state their opposition to special permit requirements that are being requested are Jane McClintock, Alan Axelrod, Karen Medina...
No, I'd like to speak.
You did? Okay. Reverend Dr. Evelyn Underwood. What about Rebecca Obchowsky?
Yeah.
Do you want to...
I'm going to speak.
You're going to speak? Okay. Before or at the time?
There's no...
Oh, that's right. That's right. We don't have any... Okay.
Mrs. Spernelli.
All right. And I guess that's the number of people who just want to register their thoughts without speaking. All right. So now we have a lot of public input on this topic, and so I'll just start calling people out. And I think many of us are, you are going to be speaking similarly, so I think that the best thing to do would be if you'd like to come up in a group of a few people, or if you'd like to come up individually, but not have more than three minutes. Ali Green? Greer?
Ali Greer. Actually, I would like to go first.
Okay, Karen.
I'm the president of the board.
Okay, Karen.
Thanks. And my statement will be long enough that there won't be three of us to make the entire statement.
All right.
Hi, my name is Karen Medina. I am the current president of the board at the Urbana-Champaign Independent Media Center, and I want to put on record that there are at least 25 people here in support of the IMC. Background: The Urbana-Champaign Independent Media Center has been a beloved community institution in the heart of downtown Urbana for 19 years. Our mission is to foster the creation and distribution of media and art that emphasizes underrepresented voices and perspectives, and to promote empowerment and expression through media and arts education. In 2005, the UCIMC purchased the downtown post office, converted it into a community media center and arts center, as well as to preserve this historic Urbana building and keep postal services in downtown. In a given year, the IMC hosts over 1,000 public events, bringing over 200,000 visits every year, bringing vitality to our downtown, which has historically struggled. UCIMC has over 500 volunteers per year who contribute the amount of labor equal to 25 full-time staff and over 6,000 contacts. We provide fertile soil for people to plant their ideas at the IMC, and they have. Books2Prisoners has shipped 150,000 books to people incarcerated in Illinois, winning the Illinois Governors Award. Makerspace has hosted dozens of regional makers' fairs, bringing tens of thousands to downtown. The Bike Co-op started as a program in our basement and has blossomed in our basement into its own organization with an additional campus location, recycling thousands of bikes into the community and instigating a bike renaissance in town. We have one of the longest-running art galleries in Urbana. We have a new archive of social movement history in Champaign-Urbana with historical documents not found anywhere else. We operate a 24/7 radio station with multilingual programming. Our performance venue is a central location for Pygmalion Music Fest, Folk and Roots Festival, Girls' Rock, Boneyard Arts Festival, and other beloved Urbana events. We hosted emerging artists who now have international fame, including the hip-hop Mother Nature, Caribbean-American poet and author Stacy N. Chin, and folk legend Charlie King. The city of Urbana has been a longstanding valued partner of the IMC. By last count, 70% of grantees of the Urbana Public Arts Fund host their events at the IMC. The IMC is the site of multiple startup companies receiving City of Urbana Business Development Grants. We have hosted historic preservation workshops with the city, teaching residents how to restore 100-year-old windows. 15 years ago, when the Urbana Free Library was not able to provide wireless internet, the IMC and Pixo did so, and at our expense, so that patrons could experience this new technology. And notably, the City of Urbana and the UCIMC partnership secured a prestigious National Endowment of the Arts, our town grant. Due to the historic exclusion of youth, especially youth of color, from downtown Urbana, we focused the grant on an open scene project to put youth of color at the center of designing how UCIMC and downtown generally could be more welcoming to youth and marginalized populations. The current situation and why I am here now. Recent action by the City of Urbana administration threatened to shut down IMC operations completely, shuttering our doors. The IMC membership met yesterday to review and discuss these threats from the city. And the IMC was with near unanimous support that we go to you, our elected officials, to request your intervention. In March, there was an event where an African-American man was seen leaving the IMC with an alcoholic beverage in hand. This led to the police entering the IMC where they found alcohol, suspected marijuana, and were not able to locate the event host, who was present until the police arrived. There was no violence or threat of violence. This event was wholly outside of the IMC policies and procedures, which strictly prohibits alcohol, drugs, and smoking at the IMC, as we are a safe, all ages space. That said, the IMC contests the argument that the March 15th event was a threat to human life, health, or safety or property, as activities at the IMC were similar to that of any downtown venue at the same hour. Monday, March 17, 2019, I, President of the Board, Karen Medina, and Stuart Levy, member of the IMC and new board member, talked to Sergeant Lotion at the Urbana City Building. At that meeting, it was made clear that special events were the problem. Studying the Urbana definition, alcohol and street closures were the definition of special events. I shared that information with the Board of Directors. The IMC Board took action to reaffirm the no alcohol policy. We posted signs, or enter in all future event hosts to the no alcohol policy and requiring security plans for nighttime shows. The IMC Board received a March 22 memo from the city, which with careful reading, was interpreted to impact only events with alcohol. On May 3rd and 4th, the IMC hosted the Immersion Festival, an event funded by a City of Urbana Public Arts Grant and heavily subsidized by the IMC, who contributed $1,600 in space usage. The May 3rd and 4th event was coordinated closely with the city, took place without incident. The Immersion Festival reaffirmed the IMC Board's understanding that special event permits were specifically for events with alcohol, not for all public events. June 3, 2019, we were shocked when the city hand-delivered a notice of violation citing two very peaceful events, May 11th and 12th, as events that violated the earlier letter and imposing the maximum fine of $750 per incident, or $1,500 citing the two events. Both events had clear security plans, board members present, and had occurred without incident. The city's letter also contained threats to take the IMC to court. This second letter had clearly a different interpretation spelled out, that all events open to the public, whether IMC programs or not, whether they had alcohol or not, would require the IMC or third-party host to submit an application for a special event permit 45 days in advance, or face a significant fine for late submission, pay $100 in processing fee if the event was not produced by the IMC, and submit a security plan. The IMC leadership was shocked by the lack of communication and collaboration from the City of Urbana, where we hold trusted relationships, as well as an unbelievably all-encompassing net the city was casting. The city's approach is like putting out a house fire by flooding the whole village. Under the restrictions demanded by the city, the events we would need a permit include Sunday church gatherings, a reading group, a children's musical recital, open hours of the Bike Co-op, a poetry reading, a dance performance, a staff retreat, a conference, a movie night, a theater performance. This is not hyperbole. We actually had to wait for the city's executive department to sign off on letting the IMC host an unconference put on by adults with developmental disabilities, a Sunday afternoon music recital by children, and a Girls' Rock Workshop series to introduce girls to musical instruments. We reached out to meet with the city attorney, who directed us to the police department. We held honest and productive conversations with Lieutenant Joel Sanders of the Urbana Police Department, who has modeled a more collaborative approach and listened to her concerns. We had been through laborious special event permit process, and we were able to hold a Pride Weekend event only because of the interventions and advocacy of Joel and Vince Guston in Public Works. That said, the attendance at that event was never more than 10 people at a given time because our permit was received 24 hours before the events start, and we were not able to publicize it. Following a meeting with Lieutenant Sanders, we received a letter proposing that all public events after 8:00 PM secure a permit. We decided to see what the impact of this might be. In reviewing 51 major artistic events from 2017, which we reported to the Illinois Arts Council, which represent a fraction of our public events in a year, we realized that 30 of these 51 events would have required a permit. We have submitted the document to you that lists these events, highlighting the ones that would need a permit under this rule. They include a photo exhibit, a Juneteenth family event, a poetry reading, an immigration workshop, a jazz festival, a play, a movie screening. Attempts to negotiate on this have been refused by the city. In summary, the special event permit process is an intensive process created by the city for events with alcohol or closure of city streets. Its application to nonprofits, profit arts center, who holds mostly free and low-cost events, makes no sense. It appears to be a violation of both our constitutional rights of free speech and our rights of peaceable assembly. The current proposal by the city will shutter the IMC. Because our small events usually do not plan much more than 45 days in advance, it makes the IMC an unreliable venue, requiring burdensome negotiations and potentially long lead times to make anything happen. Already, we have had to cancel numerous events, or tell them to go to Champaign for space. Non-IMC events pay only $40 an hour to use the space. The 100 permit fee to apply to the city for a special event permit, the 100 permit fee more than doubles the cost of the events themselves. The administration of the IMC is funded in part by events. Although we charge lower fees than any other comparable space in town, we make up for it in volume, as many small events pay for our utilities. We have already lost thousands of dollars in revenue over this conflict. Long-term loss puts all our programs at risk. There are several important things to note about the IMC. According to our structure, all events, meetings and workshops, with few exceptions, are open to the public. That makes them public events. The majority of our events bring in less than $100 per event. As most of them are hosted or co-sponsored by the IMC, no one is turned away from an IMC event due to lack of funds. Our center is focused on providing a safe, supportive space for marginalized populations, such as immigrants, youth, African-Americans, Latinos, and members of the LGBTQ+ population. Safety for these vulnerable populations does not mean hired security forces as required by the city process. We are asking the mayor and the Urbana City Council to advocate that the IMC be treated like the nonprofit arts center that we are, and one whose presence is recognized as valuable to the life of downtown Urbana, under the conditions offered to us by the city that is not possible. No one is trying to arrange a normal, peaceable, alcohol-free event, a musical performance, or birthday party, or art show, such as we have hosted countless times, can now be confident that our space will actually be available. We are asking for you to put away your threats and talk to us. We share the safety concerns with the city. We do not want alcohol, drug use, smoking, or violence on our property or during our events, because we want them to be safe for everyone. We want to collaborate on ensuring every event is safe for all. We want to be a responsible venue, and not to be regulated out of existence.
And I would, for the record, I'd like to say that I've also been given a sheet here of, I think it was the 51 events that were mentioned by Karen, and are highlighted in yellow, the ones which would be affected, which is like three-quarters of the list. And so this will become part of the record. I'm not really sure how we're going to be handling this. I mean, there are many people who would like to basically say that they are in support of it, and I'm sure that if you came up and said, yes, this is what I agree with, we could take quite a few minutes of our meeting to do that. Maybe it would be more useful to just have a general conversation in council about maybe a way of approaching the request.
There is one... Yeah, there's one group that is actually going through the process right now of getting the permit right now, and if we could specifically listen to how hard that process is, that would be incredibly helpful.
Sure. All right, so which individuals would like to come forward and talk about that as a representing of the group?
That would be me.
What is your name, please?
Kendall Arrington.
Kendall Arrington. All right. Go ahead, you have... I'll give you five minutes.
Well, we're probably on that list of events that are yellowed out. We use the IMC a lot for... We use the IMC a lot for music shows, concerts. They have a studio there that a lot of people use, but right now, we're going through the process. I'd say we've had this booked since before the 45-days policy, whatever, they gave on the 3rd, but the paperwork hit the city's desk somehow today. And he gave me a call and told me that because it wasn't in the 45-days, that we couldn't use the IMC. He said that he had other stuff on his... Can you hear me?
I can.
He said they had other stuff on his desk. He had about four or five other things that he didn't feel like moving our stuff over to look at. He didn't feel like getting a hold with the right officials to speed up the process, even though I've had, we've had it booked. We use the IMC probably six to seven times a year. This is probably our fourth or fifth time this year.
And there's never been...
And there's never been an issue. We've never had the police called, never had any complaints. There's always somebody there for the IMC that oversees what we do, and I've never had a problem until this happened today.
Okay, thank you very much for that input. People who've indicated they would want to speak?
Dennis.
Yes, Eric.
I guess, you know, if there's more information, of course, I'm happy to listen to everybody, but the description of what staff is doing, with the exception of Joel Sanders, the description of what the staff is doing sounds to me incredible, and I'd like to hear the staff perspective on what on earth is happening.
All right, go ahead then. Carol, do you want to make a comment?
I'll just make a general comment at this point, which is, a lot of things have been said, and they warrant a detailed response, and so I'm not going to get into a point-by-point rebuttal of what you've heard.
Right. We're just taking public input.
Yeah.
But, okay, so I guess what I would like to hear from staff, when you're ready, is why the IMC should not continue to be treated as an independent, not-for-profit arts center, arts and culture center, as opposed to being treated like some bar that wants to have an event to sell more alcohol?
I can give you a full explanation. We will give you a full explanation.
Right. And really, we're here to take your input. We're not here to debate or to settle the issue this evening, but we certainly can talk about it. First, Jared.
Dennis, I would ask that folks be considerate of the time, but I do think that everyone who has entered a card who wishes to speak should be allowed to speak, Dennis.
Okay. All right, then. I mean, we certainly have quite a few people who would like to come up. Mary Alice.
I just would like to ask Carol, at the next meeting, if that's not enough time, at the following meeting, so within two weeks, if you could give us an actual formal response to some of the things that we're hearing.
Yes, and I'd like to...
Thank you.
I really would like, and I think it's fair to everybody to give a point-by-point, you know...
Yes, if you could just do that at either the next committee or the next city council, that would be appreciated.
We will.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. And I want to just say that Jane McClintock wrote an essay on her report, so we'll keep that in the file. All right, so those who want to speak, I'll just start. Al Kagan? I'm just going to bring these out randomly. Three minutes.
Thanks very much. I'm a founding member of the IMC. By the way, I live in Champaign. I don't live in Urbana. Many people who use and participate in programs at the IMC live in Champaign and in more far-flung places as well. So this is actually not just limited to Urbana, it's a regional, important resource. I work on the Public Eye. I think most of you have seen our newspaper. It's an independent, alternative newspaper. I've been working on it since I retired from the university six years ago. I think it's a very important project of the IMC, and I'd like to just say something about the need for independent media. And if we don't have the IMC, the Public Eye is in jeopardy. And I think it would be a horrible thing to lose the Public Eye, which has been in existence for such a long time. And I'd like to remind the council of the First Amendment. "Congress shall make no law respecting and establishment of religion or prohibiting the free exercise thereof, or abridging the freedom of speech, or the press, or the right of people peaceably to assemble and petition the government redress of grievances." Okay, this is the press. Thomas Jefferson... Thomas Jefferson made a very famous quote, "The basis of our governments being the opinion of the people, the very first object should be to keep that right. And where it left to me to decide whether we should have a government without newspapers, or newspapers without a government, I should not hesitate a moment to prefer the latter." I urge you to take care of this situation and put the IMC back in the position that it was until now, for the last 19 years. Thank you.
Thank you. Mike Ingram? Again, three minutes.
Hello, everybody. Mike Ingram, Champaign County Board Member, also Champaign resident, not Urbana. But what got me to roll across the line into Urbana to come talk tonight was the IMC. And I think I have a unique perspective, partially because my entire adult life I've basically spent as a musician and as a booking, you know, booking venues and promoting shows, including being one of the co-founders of the Pygmalion Music Festival, which uses the IMC space quite a bit. I've done shows in there as a promoter. I've played shows in there. I've spoken at the Make Racism Wrong Again event that was held there. I've spent a lot of time in the IMC over the years, and I've seen a lot of really great programming happen there. Currently, I also book the Canopy Club and several smaller things like WEFT. I do WEFT sessions booking. And I also book at Exile on Main Street, which is a record store in Champaign, which is currently catching the overflow. And I have a lot of desperate people asking me to, if they can move their shows from the IMC to Exile on Main Street, which is, you know, we have some similar, you know, difficulties with Champaign if we aren't very, if we aren't careful. But I think one of the problems that I have here is that it seems like the focus, well, statistically and historically in this town, the focus tends to happen to a lot of events that just happen to be black. But on top of that, if you start talking about events having, you know, alcohol, we sell alcohol freely around town and in bars, and soon we'll be also doing that with marijuana. A lot of times, even if the IMC has regulations and restrictions against having those in the building, people are doing that outside and coming in. You can't stop anybody from doing that at Exile on Main Street. You can't stop anybody from coming to these city council chambers and doing that. And a lot of times, the problem that, if you have one problematic person, that's literally the only reason that that problem exists. So I don't, I don't really love the come-down on top of the IMC for, you know, even when they're doing their best to regulate things. But part of the problem with this is, there are very few spaces in this town, and they're diminishing by the day, where people can go and do things. They can put on things with no real restrictions. They can put on their weird, you know, indie rootsy metal show. They can do hip-hop shows. They can do anything that they want in a space like this. And if we continue to take those spaces away, for one, it greatly diminishes our ability to have amazing artists in this town, but also it really limits the spaces where people can do things. And we want people to be doing things instead of, you know, everybody that laments all the kids that are out on the street or doing anything else, this is a space where they can actually be doing something. So I planned for five minutes. I realize my time is up, but I do just want to say that, you know, I don't necessarily, I don't know that the ordinance's intention was to do this. I tend to doubt it personally. I feel like it probably wasn't the case. If it was, then I have a bigger issue with that. But if I'm correct in that it wasn't, I'd very much like to see a quick action to clarify and rectify this, because it's, this is, this is very impactful to a lot of the people that we all, as government officials, purport to want to help. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. I will see you by time.
Okay. Thank you. Ali Greer?
My name is Ali Greer. I use they/them pronouns. I will say that I moved to this city partly because the IMC was a badass hub for local artists to do their thing. I am a queer person who is greatly ashamed of this town. It was the 50th anniversary of Stonewall, and not one flag was raised in this town to say that you care, that it is safe, not in downtown Champaign, not in downtown Urbana. And if you say, oh, we have a Pride Parade in September, what about your adults who are gay in this town? What about everyone else who lives here that's not a student? If we want to regulate people for alcohol, why don't we start regulating the fraternities on campus? If they can drink openly whenever they want, then let's be real. And I'm someone who's teaching at the university right now. I see what the fraternities do to my students and what happens. So if we're going to sit here and police black communities and queer communities, because that's what's happening, then take a look around. I went to the Pride event at 10 o'clock PM. I was followed by the police to the back door. And when I asked him, why are you following me? He said, I'm doing my job. And I said, sir, this is a queer space. Your presence is triggering to people in this space. And he laughed at me and said, triggering? Get over it. I'm doing my job. I said to him, I said, sir, look in the window. There are three children dancing. I am 34 years old. I was excited to go to a Pride event, and I walked into a room where, yes, there was trans flags, yes, there was rainbow flags, and there was three children under the age of 10 with their three parents dancing. Why? Because we couldn't get a permit to have an event where we could feel safe to drink ginger ale. There's a problem.
Thank you.
Hey, thanks for hearing us out. Carol Enskeep, 606 East High. I'm here tonight because of the issues around the IMC. And I'm here to urge the city council and the mayor to take an active interest in these issues and to ensure that the unique and vital role of our IMC is not undermined by onerous or expensive regulations and oversight. The IMC is on a shoestring budget, and everything that happens there is largely organized and run by volunteers. I hope every one of you, and I've seen some of you, but I hope those of you who haven't had a chance to come to the IMC will come out to an all-ages dance party, to the annual speak-out against rape and violence, to a community book sale, to a yoga class, an art opening by a new young artist, to a church service, or a concert, or a film, or a theater performance. I have attended so many memorable events at the IMC, have met so many people I never would have known, seen so many creative artworks, heard poetry and music from people in our very own community. Urbana needs this place, because we need more welcoming spaces for teens and for people of color, and for our campus and our community to come together, which they do at the IMC. We need affordable spaces that support artists and musicians and political organizers. We need these events and programs that draw people to our downtown. I take safety concerns seriously. I live and I work just blocks from the IMC, and I attend many events there. Common sense communication and planning between the city and the IMC is key. But please ensure that the IMC is not singled out for unfair, expensive, and burdensome regulations. I'll be following this issue. This IMC is beloved to our community, and I hope you're hearing that tonight.
George Hardbeck?
My name is George Hardbeck, and I've been on the board for the third year this year at the IMC. I have a radio show that I've been doing since 2013 at WRFU out of the IMC. And I guess that's kind of a public forum, because I keep it as an open door to have conversations there during my show on Thursday nights, as well as starting a 12-step group called Earth Anonymous slash ACDC Adult Children Dysfunctional Culture. The idea being that, that we have a lot of dysfunctional patterns in our culture, and how do we deal with that? How do we, how do we approach it? And addictions like greed being one that is probably causing more harm to the planet and to each other than any other addiction. So, and how that leads dysfunctional culture in a way that an abusive, addictive parent can structure a family in a way that you have a scapegoat lost child mascot, all that. You have the same kinds of things in a culture as well. And so we have a culture that is, you know, well, let me just go back to low-power radio. Low-power radio was designed so that people would have a voice, because commercial interests intervened into other radio. So having this kind of radio is an opportunity for people to actually express what they're dealing with and not have it intervened on by, you know, money and power. And so, you know, so how do we do that in our world when we have so many institutions where it's like, well, how, you know, we're going to end up with that kind of control by people who have those kinds of interests pulling strings and playing games and so on? So if we're, you know, the Independent Media Center is one of these places where people can actually have conversations. And I think that conversations are really kind of the key medium that we have for the Independent Media Center, for us to be mutual with each other, to develop a mutual society, which we're still working on after over 200 years, trying to come back to what the Indigenous tried to lay out for us, including a mutual economy, and to try to remind us that we had something like that for most of our generations before we got caught up in imperialism in Europe, speaking for the Euro-Americans here. So, you know, so the IMC is one of those places where we can move back into reconciliation and restoration and move into a mutual society, culture, ecology, economy, all the above, which we really need to do, especially now in mass extinction and with mass incarcerations growing for profit, and so on and so forth. We've got all kinds of abuses that are happening in our world, and this is one of those places that's unique and has helped other places like that to exist around the planet. So, you know, we are one of those places that a lot of places, a lot of cities, and geographical regions don't have. And that makes Urbana and Urbana City Council and city as a partner in this, you know, one of those places that can really make a difference in how we take on our world. That's all. Thanks.
I've been a resident of Champaign, Urbana, for over 20 years, working as an educator. I'm also a mom. I'm here tonight because I value the Independent Media Center, and it's a great community resource that provides a venue for education, for action, and for building relationships with other members of this community. As Carol mentioned, people I would, and I know others would not otherwise, come to know and really have a chance to have real, meaningful communication with. I attend numerous events at the IMC, such as book clubs, candidate forums, organizational meetings, art openings, theater performances, utilizing the center as an individual, as a teacher, and as a mother, since many events and organizations using the space are family-friendly. I also did a quick survey of my Facebook friends just in the past 24 hours, asking for information about who had attended events there or had organized events for groups that they are affiliated with. Over half of the 20 people who responded in that time said they'd not only been to the IMC at least once in the past year, they'd also secured space for an event themselves. So clearly, there are many in our community who count on the IMC as a resource, not only for a learning space as a visitor, but also for organizers. Requiring organizations and individuals who wish to utilize the center by paying an expensive permit fee and applying over a month in advance would have a chilling effect on this valuable community-enriching activities that I and others have experienced there. I'd also like to point out that I knew I wanted to come to the city council meeting to talk about this topic tonight. And when I looked at the agenda on the website just today before I came, it said that this meeting would precede the Cunningham Township Board meeting. So I think I and others were not really anticipating sitting through a two-hour meeting. So just letting you know that.
And nor were we, actually.
Okay.
Rebecca Obachowski?
My name is Rebecca Obachowski, and I am the Executive Director of Community Choices and one of the main organizers of the unconference event that Karen mentioned in her statement earlier this evening. So the unconference was an event, well, Community Choices is a service organization located in Champaign that serves all of Champaign County to support adults with developmental disabilities and their families. We support over 100 families every year, and one of the main functions that we have is to help build community and create welcoming spaces and connections between people with disabilities and, and people and groups and events that happen in the community. So the unconference was an event that we, we co-sponsored and co-planned with the Urbana Park District, with Imbibe Urbana, and with 25 O'Clock Brewing. So, and this event, the, the main focus of it was to create, create community and give an opportunity to people with intellectual disabilities to be seen as leaders and to have a space where they could connect with other peoples on a, on a, like a fully sort of democratic and equal level. We had been planning this event for months. We were so excited to have the IMC as one of the places that we were going to be having this event. And it was, it was four hours before it was supposed to start that we hadn't heard if we were going to be able to continue the event. It was on June 7th and 8th. I think I got an email from people at the IMC on like, at like 1:00 on June 7th, saying that it was okay and that the city had okayed us to go forth with our event. And so I just want to tell you a little bit about what actually happened at that event. And this was an event where people with disabilities and other people in the community were all able to sort of just share their interests and talents and come together. In between two of the different sessions that happened there, there was about five people. One of them had an intellectual disability, and four of them didn't. A lot of these people had never met each other and were sitting around having a conversation like you might with some people that you just found out that you had a really similar interest with. That's something that doesn't ever happen. And I was so excited to be able to have a space in my community, the community that I have grown up in and lived in and been a citizen of my entire life, to see that that was able to be fostered in that space. I would love to be able to continue to have events at the IMC. There are so few places that a, that a, that a nonprofit and a service provider can actually use space in public for a low cost. And with, with having to have a special use permit, there's very few events that we plan 45 days out. And if we're not going to be able to find out if we can actually have those until a few hours beforehand, there's no way that I would ever, you know, just being a reasonable director of an organization, choose to use that, use that space. I was very excited to hear recently that they were awarded a $75,000 grant to increase their accessibility. Not everybody that I work with has a physical disability, but that has been one of the sort of hindrances. And to know that we can have a welcoming and community-based space that people can access regardless of their physical ability is extremely important to this community. And so to then have that limited by onerous restrictions just seems like it doesn't make any sense and doesn't make this any more welcoming or inclusive of a community. So I think you all should consider, going forward, if, you know, to, to withdraw the restrictions until the city has a chance to respond to you, so that they can, you know, that the events that are, have been planned can continue. And that people can continue to use this space without, you know, being turned away. I mean, we've already heard from people that have said, you know, people have left. And I think it seems within your power to be able to do that. So I hope that you will move forward.
I'd like to ask a question. Rebecca?
Oh, yes.
So what, what, what changed that allowed you to have the event ultimately, even though it was only four hours before that you knew that the change had occurred?
It was all having to do with the advocacy on the part of the people at the IMC, trying to support the events that were happening there and trying to support the welcoming and inclusive places that they're trying to create.
So basically, you convinced staff that it was acceptable to continue with the event?
I think, yeah. Karen could probably speak to that better than I could.
So the city's letter said that all events had to have a permit. And so we were in conversation with Lieutenant Sanders, and then the city sent us a letter saying that certain types of events, or events before 8:00, didn't need a permit. And so that's what changed, is that we finally got permission for things that, that ended before 8:00 PM could actually But also, just as a point of information, we can't take any action unless it's on the agenda. So, I think there's probably support with two of us to put it on the agenda for next week, at least for discussion, so that if we were to want to take action, then we could at that time.
Absolutely. I appreciate that.
Okay, we have two more, two more people. Shall we listen to those and then have a good discussion if we want to? Barry Israelowitz.
Hello, council. I'm Barry Israelowitz, speaking in support of the Independent Media Center to tell you why I so strongly support the IMC's ability to hold late-night events. So, I've lived in Urbana for over 20 years, got my PhD here in biophysics. I still work for the university. In my spare time, I volunteer for the Bike Project of Urbana-Champaign. I was one of the founders. I'm currently Vice Manager, but I'm speaking here today on my own. The Bike Project is a teaching-do-it-yourself community bicycle workshop. There's really two of those. We've got our original all-volunteer shop in downtown Urbana, in the basement of the IMC building, and one on campus in collaboration with the university. People come to our workshop with a bike and a need for bicycle repairs, and we show them how to do those repairs. People leave empowered to do bike repairs, empowered to bicycle more every day in all seasons, and also say we're about the best path for people in town, especially people with lower income to have low-cost, reliable bicycle transportation. I, thanks. I think we make a big positive impact on the community. Some very quick numbers. We have right now 600 active members, either paid or via work equity. We are a central part of implementing an annual light-the-night safety program. That's installed 20,000 safety lights, over 10,000 bikes, over 11 years. We have lots of visits. Our downtown Urbana shop in the IMC building has over 1,700 signed-in visits over the last 12 months. We sometimes miss a few if they don't sign in. For, please, trouble at our shop in the basement of the IMC building is extremely rare. We've had over 2,000, over 2,000 regularly scheduled open-hour sessions over 13 years. We've called police, I think, only one or two times in the 13 years over misbehaving shop visitors. A workshop in the basement of the IMC building has scheduled open hours. We skew hours towards community members and to volunteers who work nine-to-five jobs, nine-to-five jobs. So, we need nighttime hours. Our weeknight hours tend to be 6:30 PM to 9:00 PM. We start after work. Repairs take a while. People are dearly doing repairs until the last night 9:00 PM closing, sometimes a bit later when repairs go long. We need to get those bikes working, checked and safe. People leave our shop very happy. Now, quickly, getting to the IMC. Bike Project has existed since 2012 as a separate organization, entirely independent, 501(c)(3) nonprofit. We are renters of our space from the IMC, but from 2006 to 2012, we were a program of the IMC. They acted as a very welcoming incubator for our organization. They were a tremendously supportive incubator, giving us everything we needed to get going quickly from accounting, trash collecting, air conditioning, to hit the ground running, to grow and grow it massively, magnify the effort of our few volunteers at the time. As you've heard, our mission nearly requires having late-night hours to serve working people, and they about always have. So, Bike Project does lots of good things. We often do them late at night, but we probably wouldn't exist if not for the IMC. But the IMC is a welcoming place, not just for Bike Project, but a wide range of programs that directly help the community. As you've heard, we're far from the only community serving entity in the building. There are programs on music, creative arts, books, technology, more. There certainly can be more, there certainly should be more. Getting real work done takes real time and community building, real community building needs real reliable venues for participation and growth. Council, please, don't let the city get in the way of that. Please don't allow restrictions on late-night activity at the IMC.
Thank you. We're getting down to the last one or two. David Sisneros.
Thank you. I'm excited to be here. I watch this every, every week, so I feel like I'm now on my favorite TV show. But I'll be brief because you've already heard a lot of what I wanted to say. I guess I wanted to sort of make three points that mostly echo what people have already said. One is in support of all the wonderful things that you've already heard that the IMC does. I just made a short list of events that I've been to at the IMC in recent memory, which included concerts, community meetings, activist organization meetings for issues of like racial justice and environmental issues, art shows, events at the Makerspace. So, I guess what the message that you're hearing is that the IMC is doing all of these amazing things and that the issues that are, that are at the heart of this controversy are a very, very tiny sliver of all of these amazing things. I guess another point I wanted to make is that we, is just to oppose the way that the city has approached this issue, and I know we'll hear more about it, but at least from the perspective that you've heard tonight, it seems like a draconian approach to issue and somewhat of an unfair approach to treat a community-oriented nonprofit the way really that we would never treat a bar or restaurant in downtown, which is if the, if police were called to all of a sudden have every night, that, that bar would have to request a permit. I mean, I think you've heard that it's a problem that the, that the staff, the IMC have recognized the issues that are taking proactive steps to prevent them, and it's especially a problem given that the IMC is a not-for-profit, a community-serving institution, one that serves the most marginalized in the, in the community. So, I guess the third thing I wanted to say is that in addition to all of the other things you've heard, I guess we, I want to communicate that, to just ask the city to sit down again with the board, with the executive team in good faith to recognize the value, the uniqueness of the IMC and maybe the harm that, that has been done and is, and that is planned to be done, to sit down and to consider rescinding this, the threat of sanctions and to negotiate for, for the good of the IMC and the good of the community. So, that's all I wanted to say. Thanks.
Thank you. I did receive one card that the individual had forgotten to place their name on it. If there's anybody who had wished to speak, now's your time, please.
My name is Evelyn Underwood.
Is it?
I want to speak, sir.
Okay, then please come forward.
Did you see that?
Yeah, all right.
Thank you.
At the time, okay.
I'll be brief. Make it longer if you want, everyone. No, they're not going to let me do that. I'm Reverend Dr. Evelyn Underwood, and I just wanted to merely say that I'm a 66, probably not as long as that gentleman, but I've been in Urbana-Champaign for 66 years. And I've been with the IMC for not as long as Danielle and Beldon Fields, because they started it. But before that, Danielle, I mean, Beldon Fields was with Professor Eubanks and I. He was at the university, and he was telling us about the things that he wanted to do. But quickly, Grandpa, yeah, Walfell, and I and Aaron Ammons and Carol Ammons, every week at 4:00, see you citizens for peace and justice. From there, we had a lot of activities there at the IMC, the beloved IMC. And I just wanted to say it was, it has been in the past inclusive, inclusive youth of color and people of color, and I just hope it stays that way. But I just wanted to say this. We, people of color who've had activities there, was mindful of the fact that we had to make sure we had security. So, we would do like, well, I and other people that I talked to would do, make sure we had five or six people dressed, and they were our security. We didn't have to call the police because they were our security. We had a wonderful time, and we had our own security, and everything went well. We knew it would, but we wanted to be mindful. And, but we want to make sure that it stays. I'm supporting President, that's why I'm speaking, Sister Medina, Sister Karen Medina. So, that's all I wanted to say at this time. Thank you.
Well, I do appreciate the energy. Yes, you may. Yes, please go forward.
My name is Susan Parenti. I, sorry, Carol Mitten, I don't know what you represent. Could you tell me? Because it seems like you have a lot of responses to all these things, and are you part of the city's administration? I don't know who you are.
Yes. City Administrator.
I think you're, you're supposed to testify, but that is my.
No, I was just, you just were like a new person that just came on the scene. Okay, good. Thank you. I will make this much briefer. I had a brilliant speech, which I won't give. I did want to say that Margaret Mead in 1978 predicted the IMC. She said, "Never doubt that a small group of intelligent and committed citizens can change the world. Indeed, they are the only group that can." And I think that saying was said in prediction of the IMC. It's been a place that's been a warm nest for small, not large, not, you know, 2,000 likes on your Facebook page, small groups of people who find no huge bureaucracy making things difficult for them, meaning no bureaucracy that says 45 days, $100, et cetera. People that are trying to change something don't have a secretary that can call 50 days in advance, don't have a planning committee like the university does, et cetera. You get an idea, you need a space. Margaret Mead forgot to say that. You need a space, and you don't, it should not be a lot of money. And then you go there, and the IMC has been this because it's the when-ness of social change, not only the what-ness. But I actually want to talk about something, you know, I'm hearing my beloved friends, the reason I live in Urbana and Champaign, were making arguments for the importance of the work that the IMC is doing. And in some ways, I want to speak for a moment of bureaucracy. Bureaucracy is a really slimy thing because bureaucracy will never disagree that your work isn't important. It'll just make it look like it's beside the point. Bureaucracy will always talk about safety, liability. You're doing good work, but, and then starts the almighty, but, we're only concerned with safety, liability. One small example, for those of you that might have remembered, the Champaign County Nursing Home, when it used to be on Vine or something, the earlier one, used to have a wonderful program where little kids, they had a daycare center, Danielle, you know this, little kids that were in the same building as the nursing home would between 2:00 and 3:00 walk over to where the old people were sitting, and they would sit on the lap of the old people. And it would make everybody's day. It was needs and offers. The kids needed a lap, the adults needed a connection, and it was something that I in my work with my partner, Patch Adams, would talk about around the world, that this was a brilliant solution, where the old people offered something and needed something, and the little kids did too. But bureaucracy came, and what did bureaucracy say? It's universal text. They were concerned with safety. Little kids might fall off the lap. Liability, maybe the, you know, the daughter of an old person would sue, and so, they got rid of that program. Now, I can see, somebody said, you know, we should talk with the city. The city should apologize for abominable behavior. And, and if bureaucracy is, you know, because what people will do, I'm just warning us all, they will say, oh, we love the IMC, we like the fact that you work with adults with, you know, blah, blah, blah. But then they'll bring in liability, safety, we're just trying to do our job. So, I want to alert us about the snake of bureaucracy that's going to come. And we're in a time period where people will just not simply say, we don't like a place where black people are. They can't say that. Doesn't sound good. Bureaucracy always sounds good. So, I want us, I'm really mostly warning us, and I'm asking you to step up, and you know, this is obviously, we don't have to be defending the IMC. The city has to defend itself for abominable behavior. That's the thing. Okay, bye.
Okay, very good. I think that the community has come forward and made an excellent case of concern, and it'll be the intent of the city council to try to address it.
Thank you so much.
I've been doing a little research while we've, with half, half of my mind, while half of it has been listening. So, what the website says is a special event is an activity that materially affects the ordinary allocation of city personnel or the ordinary use of city streets, sidewalks or parking lots. None of those apply. Now, I have been looking at the ordinance, and there seems to be a gap in the ordinance, and there isn't an exemption for an organization like the IMC. We can't take any action now. I can express an opinion. My opinion is fix the ordinance so that an organization like the IMC would have an exemption. And in the meantime, until we do that, you, of course, are free to do whatever you feel you should do, but my advice would be to back off and let them do what they do.
Train your police force.
Okay. So, thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Are you on the agenda for our next meeting?
We've requested it, yes.
So, watch the agendas.
Watch the police.
Okay, we're going to go back to some of the business that we came to address as well. Report from the Committee of the Whole. We don't have any unfinished business, so we go to reports of a standing committee, the Committee of the Whole. Councilmember Alice Wu.
Thank you very much. On behalf of the committee, I would like to move approval of Resolution Number 2019-06025, our resolution relating to participation by elected officials in the Illinois Municipal Retirement Fund.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. Mary Alice Wu makes a proposed, and Jared seconds. Are there, is there a discussion? All right, I guess we need, Will Colville, vote.
Councilmembers Brown.
Yes.
Hershey.
Yes.
Jacobson.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Roberts.
Yes.
And Wu.
Yes.
Okay, that passes. Ordinance number 2000, oh, you're going to do this. Go ahead, please.
Thank you. Ordinance number 2019-06036, an ordinance approving a redevelopment agreement with Markson's Affiliates LLC for the Urbana Landmark Hotel. On behalf of the committee, I move approval.
I will second that.
I think Jared made the second. Is there a discussion? There's been a slight revision to some of the wording in the document. I don't know if we need to have a review of that before we go through, but it might be wise.
Yeah, I think so.
Brandon Boies.
I'll briefly summarize the changes that were made to the agreement prior, since the council last reviewed this at the Committee of the Whole meeting. There was a updated memo sent out earlier today. The primary changes to the redevelopment agreement were, we added further clarification to the definition of eligible redevelopment project costs. We defined the project commencement date as of July 1st, 2020, and that is the developer's deadline to start the project. It's really, they can start earlier than that date. We clarified the developer's minimum equity participation during the project construction. We took away the percentage.
discussion? Right, I guess we need, um, vote, vote, vote. Councilmembers Brown.
Yes.
Hershey.
Yes.
Jacobson.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Roberts.
Yes.
And Wu.
Yes.
Okay, that passes. Ordinance number 2000, oh, you're going to do this. Go ahead, please.
Thank you. Um, Ordinance Number 2019-06036, an ordinance approving a redevelopment agreement with Markson's Affiliates LLC for the Urbana Landmark Hotel. On behalf of the committee, I move approval.
I will second that.
I think Jared made the second. Is there a discussion? There's been a slight revision to some of the wording in the document. I don't know if we need to have a review of that before we go through, but it might be wise.
Yeah, I think so.
Brandon Boies.
I'll briefly summarize the changes that were made to the agreement prior, since the council last reviewed this at the Committee of the Whole meeting. Um, there was a updated memo sent out earlier today. Um, the primary changes to the redevelopment agreement were, we added further clarification to the definition of eligible redevelopment project costs. We defined the project commencement date as of July 1st, 2020, and that is the developer's deadline to start the project. It's really, um, they can start earlier than that date. The, we clarified the developer's minimum equity participation during the project construction. We took away the percentage and included an absolute number, 3.025 million. And we arrived at that number by taking 20% of the minimum project cost that's shown in the exhibit with the project budget. We also added a new city obligation to resurface the segment of West Green Street in the right-of-way that is immediately south of the hotel property. It's shown in a new Exhibit D that was added to the agreement. This is the right-of-way, the stub of West Green Street that's immediately in front of Lincoln Square Mall. And it should be noted as well that the MCOR project currently, um, the improvements that are set to occur there will terminate at the intersection of Race and West Green Street, leaving this stub of asphalt that won't be, um, receiving, um, any improvements as a result of that project. So, um, the proposal is that the city would carry out the asphalt patching of this portion of West Green Street under an upcoming citywide contract that will allow the city to, uh, realize some cost savings in the process over what it would cost to perform this, um, on its own. In addition, um, the city would also remove or repair that existing circle landscape planter that's located in the same area of right-of-way. Cash expenses for the city to meet these obligations are not expected to exceed $30,000, and they could be covered with funds from the Central Tiff District. The, um, so on with the list of changes. Um, the city took out some of the language describing the restaurant obligation for the developer, replacing it with, uh, just associating that with the requirements of the brand, the Hilton Tapestry brand, uh, which will have requirements for the restaurant. The, um, we also associated the term of the redevelopment agreement with the repayment of city bonds, such that once the city's bonds are repaid through the new revenues generated from the project, that could also trigger the end of the term of the agreement. And lastly, we made note of the developer, developer's desire to charge up to a 4% developers' fee. That would be depending on the availability of unused contingency in the project budget. Um, staff recommends approval, and I'd be happy to take any questions you might have.
Jared first.
I'm sure we were probably all going to ask the same things, but I'll go ahead and ask the two that were most important to me. Uh, one, I was curious about the removal of, uh, the language about the restaurants, uh, as required by the franchiser. I'm not familiar with what the language is in the requirement, uh, to them from Tapestry, but that's one. And then the other one would be, uh, about their 4% fee. I'd like to hear a little bit more about that.
Sure. So the restaurant, um, component, the city, um, had had language, um, in the original drafting, the agreement, that we'd actually borrowed from a prior agreement that was somewhat similar to this, um, that obligated the developer to create a full-service restaurant. So we want something that's an amenity and an attraction. I'll just remind council that when that language was first drafted under a prior, um, proposal, that that developer had, didn't have a, um, a brand associated with the project as concretely as, as, as is happening here. Um, when we were going back and forth between the developer, they aren't sure exactly who will operate the restaurant. They aren't, um, completely sure what concept they'd like to pursue. They'd like to maintain the maximum flexibility, and we'd like them to have a product that, um, they find successful, both financially and in terms of meeting the obligation of the brand. So we remove, move terms like full-service restaurant from the agreement to give them that flexibility.
Brandon, did you also then, what about the catering? That would be a significant need, right? Or not?
Well, it, it's not specific. The only place catering was mentioned was in the exhibit. Um, and that, that was also in the letter of intent. Um, but we just stayed true to that, um, that intent or that agreement, uh, that understanding with the developer, um, that they would meet the minimum requirements of a restaurant for the Hilton Tapestry brand. Um, they would seek to operate that, um, efficiently. And, uh, we wouldn't, uh, meddle in the operation of the restaurant, which, um, frankly is a minor detail in the scope of this, um, project.
And you had a.
The 4% developers' fee. So, um, as was actually pointed out in the SB Friedman memo, that the developer didn't include a developers' fee in their project budget. And so they wanted to retain the ability to charge one. And so, um, staff included that in their total contingency. So the idea is that the fee is not intended to reduce their minimum project cost of 15.1 million for the construction, furnitures, fixtures, and equipment, consultants' permits, and inspection fees. So the full project needs to proceed as planned for the minimum amount. And if they're successful in not utilizing their full contingency line, which again, this is a major renovation of a historic property with multiple additions. So there is plenty of risk involved. Um, they need to meet the requirements of our local historic preservation commission for certificates of appropriateness, any zoning or building code requirements of the city. There'll be plenty of those. They have to work with the state historic preservation office in their pursuit of federal tax credits. And they also have to satisfy the requirements of the Hilton brand. If they can do all that and achieve the, um, the brand and the certificate of occupancy, um, you know, that's when the city's funds arrive. Right now, their minimum project cost is 15.1 million. If they can stick to that, or, you know, not use it, not use up all their contingency, then they can pay themselves up to a 4% fee. That's our understanding of how they would proceed.
Can I follow?
Yeah.
So that, so that's not a fee as in like our extra tax, right? This is, um, they pay themselves.
As part of the project budget, yeah. But we would only, or, what's reflected here is that, um, that would be acceptable so long as it doesn't cut into their minimum project cost. They have to get the project done, first and foremost. And I think that's their goal as well, to get the project done rather than pay themselves.
Sure. Okay. That's what I, thank you for clarifying that.
Well, just go around the, the room here. Um, Bill, did you?
Um, yeah. Was, uh, so was one of the changes that the mayor would make the final approval instead of us approving the final document? Or was that the way it was originally?
Um, that's the language of the ordinance, um, that, that's approving this agreement, is that, um, it's approved in substantially the form exhibited here too, or something along those lines. And what that allows for is, is minor, um, corrections.
So these other things like the, um, making the restaurant language agree with the restaurant language in the, in their boutique hotel agreement, would that be considered a minor thing that that might have changed, and then the mayor would have been able to approve that without us?
Yeah, well, specifically, um, like in the Exhibit C, we had already struck the language in the agreement that removed the full-service restaurant language, um, and just associated with the brand. However, um, and we'd actually, um, already committed to make the change, the, um, the list of additional project elements in, in Exhibit A, uh, we hadn't struck the like language there. So that kind of thing where the intent was already clearly established, um, yes, we would just be cleaning up language, um, you know, adjusting dates slightly, as long as we're not materially changing the, um, obligation of the city.
And then, so, can you remind me, I was looking at the bond value analysis again, and, um, where it breaks down the new revenues expected and how it would add up to, to pay off the bond over 10 years. Um, I know when we had our individual briefings, it was clear that the new revenues took into account that some of that might have come to Urbana anyway, like especially the hotel rooms. I think, I don't know what the percentage of it was, but it might assume that 30 or 40, 50% of those rooms would have been sold anyway to someplace, some other hotel in Urbana, probably a lower room rate. We wouldn't have got as much tax, but you took all that into consideration. You aren't consider, you aren't, um, treating this as though every room rented at the, at the boutique hotel is new revenue, right?
That's correct. I don't recall the specific number, but we discounted, um, the revenue in the bond model on the front end. Um, but I, I do not believe we applied a similar discount to the boutique hotel motel tax, because that was only for this hotel.
That makes sense. Then for the, um, changes in the restaurant and catering, um, I assume that in the bond value analysis and how we're going to pay that back, you've made certain assumptions about if, you know, if they're, it's, they're going to have, um, conventions and cater, caterum. Um, that's, seems like it's a pretty significant portion of the restaurant sales for the hotel. Um, so would that change that, those figures much? But I don't know what the minimum requirements are for, for, um, that brand, but it could be, you know, a lunch, lunch counter and, and early dinner or something. It might not be very substantial since it's a boutique hotel. And it's great for other businesses in downtown. I'm not necessarily opposed to that, but just as far as paying back the bonds go, um, seems like there would be less revenue coming in from the hotel itself.
Um, yes, that, we discussed that internally. Um, on page four of the original memo, it shows the, the total amounts of revenue coming from the different sources.
Food and beverage is 300 some thousand. So it wouldn't, so even if it cut that in half, it might be 150,000 over 10 years or something. Does that sound right?
Yes, but it's over, um, the, the total 10-year revenue is, is 8.2 million. Um, so the total revenue there is about, um, well, it's less than 4% of the total. Um, so changing that doesn't have a, a big impact on the model. I mean, it's possible it could reduce it. Um, but we also don't know. Giving them full flexibility might allow them to pursue a model that, um, you know, maximizes their, or maximizes revenue. Um, we're just allowing them to sort that out with the brand and the market.
Okay. And then, um, just one last question, and that wasn't a change, it was just something I noticed this time around. Um, the term of the agreement is set at 20 years, but a lot of the things are expected to be paid off in 10 years. Um, and, and there's, can you explain what the 20 years is? It seems like everything is pretty much pegged to 10 years, but there's a 20-year figure in there for the term of the agreement. Do we still plan to sell 10-year bonds?
Yes. And that's why the language was added that allows the term of the agreement to expire after, except for those provisions that survive the agreement. Yeah, at the time, it's paid off with new revenues. So if that, um, is less than 20 years, I actually asked that question of Ken Beth, the, uh, our special counsel who drafted this agreement. And he just, um, I think it was just trying to be conservative and inclusive of, um, any possible scenario. But the developer asked a similar question, and that's how we came to the, um, the language about allowing the term to also end when bond repayment occurs.
Okay.
So we didn't modify the original language.
Great, thanks.
Okay, further? Anybody else? Good luck. Mary Alice Wu.
Um, so that was my question that Bill just asked, and I just wanted to clarify.
Yes.
If the term agreement, so let's, uh, let's think positively, and we pay off all of our, um, all of our loans in eight years. So that would mean that this agreement would be null. And so if they wanted to change it from a Hilton Tapestry to another brand, that would be allowed. I just want to confirm, is that correct or incorrect?
I would have to ask an attorney the answer to that question, but.
I'll admit, I was checking something different ordinances. Repeat your question, please.
Um, so let's say that we, we are able to pay off our bonds in eight years, um, in which case this agreement will be null and void, um, because of the language that we put in there, that as soon as our bonds are paid off, the agreement's over. So if they want to change their brand of hotel after that time period, are they allowed according to this agreement?
I believe that if, if the agreement then terminates at the end.
So everything in this agreement is null and void as long as our bonds are paid off?
Unless there is a very expressed provision that, uh, a term typically an indemnity or something like that survives the expiration of the agreement.
Okay, thank you. Would they be willing to add in something that at minimum, they would keep it at 10 years for Hilton Tapestry? I mean, that's kind of what we've been operating under. I mean, I don't think we're going to pay off our bonds within 10 years, but.
I mean, uh, we, we set the term at 10 years because that's our expectation of how long it will take the city to, um, receive sufficient revenues for this. Um, earlier performance means the city's, um, abdicated of that risk at an earlier date.
I might just, I might just offer that the, the, the brand and, and our, um, insistence on the brand and the agreement is because it's, it's like our insurance policy, because we are relying on some of the things that they're requiring, so that we're not separately requiring. Like, it's good enough for Hilton, and it's good enough for us. Who are we to judge? Um, but once, once we're paid back, we really, we're, we're no longer, in a sense, the financial partner of the developer anymore at that point. And so that's why that requirement would lapse.
Dennis, can I respond?
Yeah, you certainly can.
Thank you.
We're having a discussion.
Um, I, I actually would disagree, and this is why. I think that the city has invested a heck of a lot of time into, to the Lincoln Hotel, um, staff resources. Uh, and, um, part of that means that we are, yes, investing money, um, which we hopefully will get paid back, but we're also investing all of our resources of staff to see this project to fruition. Um, so I, I would like to argue that that whole process and all this time that we've put into this project, um, is to have a high level of a hotel in downtown Urbana. It's the whole reason why we've been doing this, right? So, um, I guess what I'm saying is it's more than just paying the bond back. We want to ensure that we have a high-quality hotel in our city based on this investment that we are doing. So that's, that's my point in terms of, if we're operating under this kind of assumption that we're going to have a high-quality hotel at least for 10 years, um, then I think it would be prudent for us to include that. Now, I understand, I'm not going to insist, but I'm going to request. How about that?
Fine, we can, we can ask.
Okay.
Does that mean, Carol, that we would be then, um, sort of making that a part of a negotiation with the developer?
Well, given that we're not going to insist on it, I wouldn't say that it's part of a negotiation. I think it's a request from council, and it's one that they will either find it acceptable to accommodate or not.
That's, I guess, what I meant, that the developer's the one who's going to be responding to.
Yes.
To Mary, Mary Alice's request.
Yes. So I don't know that we need to hold anything up this evening for that.
James. The one provision that Alder Person Wu is concerned about, we control. We can decide if we want to pay the bonds off early or not. If the bonds are paid off in 10 years, uh, then, yeah, then it's a question, the agreement's over.
So you're saying that our bond repayment, uh, could be modulated?
No, what I, no, what I, the, the loan arrangement for paying off the bond with whoever acquires the bond, what's going to govern. If we want to balance paying off the bond early with a question about the brand, uh, we can do that. I mean, I'm not suggesting we pay the bonds longer. If, if the bond term is 10 years, we have to pay them off within 10 years. Um, the other, the other point with that is, is if they have a brand, a Tapestry band, brand for eight years, and it's successful, then my guess is, why fix what isn't broke? Uh, they would, I would guess, want to continue that brand or a similar brand, uh, you know, comparable brand. And all, and obviously, while the agreement's in force, if they want to do that, they're going to have to get your approval to amend the agreement.
Sharice.
Okay, so my understanding then is that if, like Mary Alice said, if we pay it off early, uh, Tapestry can leave. Tapestry, the Tapestry blank, brand can leave, and we can, it could end up being a Days Inn.
Yeah, well, I don't know whether the developer's going to go to Days Inn, but let's assume that. Um, the point is, is if we pay off the bonds early, then the agreement, as I understand it, expires. And they are free to do that which they wish for the brand.
So the, the Hilton, the, the Hilton brand can just leave, this is, I guess this is what I'm asking. The Hilton brand could just leave and, and it would be, the hotel, the brand would be up for grabs. Or they could decide to stay, even if we pay it off, but they won't be obligated to stay.
Well, you have to understand, the agreement doesn't obligate Hilton. It obligates the developer.
Okay.
Uh, if, if, let's say Hilton decides to, for some reason, change the brand, maybe they call it something else other than Tapestry. The developer's going to, while the agreement's in effect, is going to have to come to the city and say, Hilton is no longer, let's say, offering a Tapestry brand. Uh, they're going to give it a different name, or they want to give us a different brand, or we'd rather go to Marriott or Hyatt. or Hyatt or whoever for their, for a comparable brand. They're gonna, as long as the agreement's in effect, they're gonna have to come to you because that requires an amendment to the agreement. So you will be presented with that. If the bonds are paid off and the agreement then is retired at eight years, two years, 10 years, the developer will be free to decide what it's gonna do with the brand.
And they can stay or go.
They can decide to find another brand or no brand. But that's because the agreement has been, has expired.
Okay.
And also, I wanted, I wondered, Brandon, if you would address a question that I had earlier, maybe just to share it. The developer stated that he expected to hold the property, brought the property into the near future, which isn't really a commitment for 10 years. And so in our conversation earlier today, you indicated that, yeah, it would be possible for the developer, once the hotel was opening, opening and meeting the conditions of the Tapestry brand, that the developer could potentially sell the, sell the property. Is that correct?
Yes, in the assignment language at the back of the agreement, there are essentially three conditions under which the developer can assign the agreement without prior approval from the council. One is any assignment of the agreement as collateral for financing, which is common in our agreements, to any related sale, assignment, or transfer in whole to a legal entity having common ownership, which is also common to have. Those are things they may need to utilize in order to put the deal together. But the third is what was created specifically for this agreement. That's any sale or assignment or transfer of the hotel facility under circumstances where the Tapestry collection by Hilton Properties brand will be maintained in accordance with this agreement. So if the developer completes the project, receives their reimbursement from the city, which only occurs after the Hilton brand has been awarded, then they would have the ability to sell the property without prior approval by the council. However, the last section points out that no sale or assignment can happen, or I'm sorry, they have to, they still have to notify the city, though. I mean, we will be informed. We won't be, we won't have prior approval, though.
Right, this is a person who's.
If the brand changes, then the approval would be required.
This is, we're working with a developer who develops properties but doesn't necessarily run them, and so therefore, he might.
We, yes, we had representatives from the operator last week, Kinsuff Hospitality's.
Okay, Jared?
Just a quick motion. We're about to run out of time, and we still have a couple appointments to do over, so I'd motion that we continue the meeting for 10 more minutes.
All right, I'll second.
All right. Timely motion. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, we're extending. All right. Bill Brown.
Since this will be the last action we take on this, and then it'll be signed by the mayor and may have some minor changes in between, can I ask if we get a copy of the final agreement and it be posted on the website as an informational item?
Sure.
For the council meeting following that?
Certainly.
Okay. Further discussion, Mary Alice.
So you had just said that they could sell this to another person who would run the Tapestry brand. Does that mean that this agreement with that transfer with that new ownership? I just wanna confirm that that's the case.
Yeah, they're obligated to assign the whole agreement to any new owner.
Okay. So they would be the same terms?
But we don't have advance approval, yes.
Okay, I just, thank you.
Further, okay? I guess we could be voting. We've had it, we've had the motion, and we've had the second. Mary Alice Wu, seconded by Gerard Miller. All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Oh, Will Calvall. Yeah, all right, thank you.
Councilmembers Brown?
Yes.
Hersi?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
And Wu?
Yes.
Okay, that passes. Good luck to us all.
To us all, a leap into the unknown.
All right. Okay, we have a discussion of consolidated social service recipient, sub-recipient agreements. See, did we wanna talk about that some more? Do you wanna confer that to the other?
Can I suggest that we not talk about this one?
Okay. So we wanna delay that to another meeting?
Yes.
Put a stopper in it.
Charlie wants us to state when we're gonna bring it up, so should we, next council or next committee?
We don't have action yet, so.
It's just discussion, so it's just a direction to staff, so it can be, it can be due next committee, yeah.
All right, to bring back next week. Okay. Anybody oppose that idea? Okay, very good. All right, reports of special committees. Seeing none. New business, okay? The first thing that we see here is the ordinance which has been moved to our next city council meeting, which was the variance on the sign on University Avenue. Next, mayoral appointment, reappointments to boards and commissions. And the mayor has forwarded to the design review board, the term ending June 30th, 2022, Nancy Ordego, Adam Bush, Rush?
Rush.
Rush. And then there was also an appointment date correction, which I think came to us in a memo.
Matt Cho and Scott Kunkel.
Yes.
Matt Cho and Scott Kunkel.
And it was their, their appointment was adjusted.
To June 30th, 2022 expiration of the design review board.
Oh, yeah, it is, okay, at the bottom, yes. So, all right. It was extended to June 30th, 2021.
Correct.
All right.
I move we approve these appointments followed promptly by adjournment.
Well, you missed one name. There's one more.
One more name.
Oh, one more name?
Yeah, Historic Preservation Commission, term ending June 30th, 2022, Gina Pogluzzo. So these are the.
I move approval.
Okay.
I'll second.
Okay, Jared Miller and Mary Alice Wu. Discussion, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? None, and therefore, that passes, and now, no further business. We will be adjourned.